As we start this evening's meeting, I'll remind council that this portion of the meeting is being recorded and livestreamed to YouTube. I would also remind council to speak clearly and project their voice when they are talking so people viewing at home can hear. I will now do a roll call of council for the benefit of the public watching this meeting. When I call your name, please wave at your camera and say here or present. I'm Councilor Redicop and I'm present and will be chairing this meeting. Mayor Shons?
I'm here. I'm having trouble finding my video.
Martin?
President?
Councilor McMillan?
Here.
Councilor Murrahann?
Present.
Councilor Shons?
Present.
Welcome, Mayor Shons.
Thank you.
Resolution to reconvene in open session that the Council of Township of Olyssy reconvenes in open session. I have a mover and a seconder. Moved by Councilor Shons, seconded by Councilor Martin. Any further discussion? All those in favor? That's passed. Disclosures of pecuniary interest. Do any members of council have any declarations of pecuniary interest for this evening's meeting? Councilor Murrahann?
Yeah, through you, Councilor Redicop. I have a pecuniary interest with the delegation of Alex Mustakis at 7.4. Drayton Entertainment is a client.
Thank you. Items to come forward from closed session? Think there's anything right now? Number five on your agenda, planning public, there's none. Presentations, number six, there is none. Now delegations, we have a few delegations this evening. So I'll give opening instructions for the delegations. We have a few delegations scheduled this evening. Before we begin, I would like to remind delegations of some guidelines for participating in tonight's meeting. Please leave your video turned off and your microphone muted until you are called upon to speak. If your microphone is on and you are disrupting the meeting, you will be muted. Please be advised that tonight's meeting does not involve a question and answer period. Any questions you ask will be noted and appropriate staff member will follow up with you at later date. Staff are not available for questions this evening. However, you can always contact them by phone or email if you have further questions. We ask that you keep your comments brief and refrain from repeating information delivered by another delegate. After you speak, please wait for any questions from council. Once there are no further questions, please turn off your microphone and camera off again. You may leave the meeting after your delegation is done if you wish. If you would like to remain on the Zoom call and watch the remainder of the meeting, you may do so as long as you keep your camera and microphone turned off. Any disruptive behavior may result in being removed from the meeting. We will begin with the first staff report. We have Senior Planner, Planner Reno Delvolo with us this evening for our council with an overview of his report. Mr. Delvolo, you may begin when you are ready. We can't, we can't hear you. Can't hear you yet. Well, until we figure it out, should we go to the next one?
And then? Chair, if I could interject, I'll just take over since we've kind of lost Reno. He was working before. So, um, so the proposal is the zoning change application 9/2020 for Eris Glen Developments. This is the proposed apartment blocks in the new Thomas Field subdivision south of Highway 7. So they went through a site-specific zoning to amend the C4 zoning that's on there that allows a mixed-use development. So what we're basically attempting to do is to limit the amount of, or maximize the amount of commercial that can take place on the site. As well as having apartment structures on the property. So there is some, in the appendices, some of the drawings in there showing the designs and the concepts. So there is a site-specific zoning in front of you for the units. There are three and four-story units. There's a fair number of units in there. There's some site-specific zoning for the block on Greenhouse Road. Fronting on Greenhouse and Hopeful Crossing. So just to define what's the front of the property. Basically, and what's the rear lot lines to say what's the minimum amount of retail that's required in each of the buildings? And to just fundamentally allow us the mixed-use development to take place on these two properties. So there's that one on the corner and then there's one further down on Iron Horse Drive with a number of mixed use. Just in terms of the commercial, it will be fronting on the roads and then the lots, the apartment buildings behind will not have commercial, they'll just be apartment blocks. So I, hopefully, I think I covered everything. If there's any questions, staff can respond as well. The applicant will be going through their presentation or just speaking to it also.
Are there any questions for Mr. Vink from council? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Vink, for filling in. And sorry, Mr. Delvolo, that your technology wasn't working this evening.
Is it, can anybody hear, can you hear me now or no?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Great. Thanks, Jeremy.
Okay, good. Thank you. Now we'll have Delegate Megan Garrity of GSP Group speak to council. Mrs. Garrity, please turn your camera on and your microphone on and you may begin when you are ready.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, staff and members of the public. My name is Megan Garrity. I'm a planner with GSP Group. I'm here this evening on behalf of Thomas Field Homes. I don't have a full presentation this evening. I just simply wanted to say that we had a chance to review the planning report and we agree with the recommendations and we had a chance also to review the bylaw and we agree with how that is written as well. So I am available for any questions as well.
Are there any questions for Ms. Garrity? Seeing none, council in your package, there is a recommendation in the report. Would anyone like to move that recommendation? Councilor Martin moves it, seconded by Councilor Murrahann? Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's passed. The next delegation this evening is James Martin, who has a request for relief from the seasonal half-load restrictions on Four Hill Road. James Martin is with us this evening on behalf of Abner Martin with a request for council. Mr. Martin, you may turn your video on and your microphone on as well. You have 10 minutes to address council and you may begin when you're ready.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for letting me speak to you. My name is James Martin. I live at 2416 Floridale Road, which is the very first farm north of the village of Floridale. We are in the process this winter and spring now of building new sheep structure and hay storage. We were able in January to get the hay structure in, but due to the lockdown and everything moving remotely and everything, we didn't meet our objective of getting the footings in for the new barn by the end of February. So what we're asking for is an easement of the half-load restrictions. And this would apply to Floridale Road where it becomes Township Road 6, which is basically from Floripine Road to our farm, which is a distance of about 750 meters. Part of that road was rebuilt about six or seven years ago with replacement of the bridge and the road structure being built up from the village to the end of our property. This would save us in our building schedule about six to seven weeks building time. And we are on a bit of a time schedule here because my builder needs to have this structure complete by the end of July. This was, so what we're asking for is the last week of March and the first week of April. There'd be four days each week. The four, first four days would facilitate getting the footings in and the forms up so that the first week of March and the, or April, sorry, immediately following Easter, we could get the the foundation walls poured and then this would allow the builder, the middle of April, to commence construction. It'd be, we figure around 13 to 14 truckloads of cement that would be coming. And like I said, it would save us considerable time in this project. We respectfully ask for your consideration and if anyone has any questions, I would be more than happy to address them.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Martin. Is there any questions or comments for Mr. Martin? Councilor Shons? You're muted, Larry. Oh, you're still muted. Technology. Yeah. Through you to Mr. Martin. Where did you say that location was and where the, where would the cement trucks come in from?
The cement trucks would be coming from Listowel. And the half-load restriction on the Township Road would be from Floripine Road to our property, which is the very first property north of the village of Floridale, just across the bridge. So we'd only be on Township Road for 750 to 800 meters.
Okay, and so they would come straight in Floridale Road off of 86?
Yeah, they would come down to the lights and then come up Regional Road 19 or straight up into Floridale.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Martin this evening? Councilor Martin?
Thank you. We put half-load restrictions in place to protect our roads. And that section of road is not in very good condition. I went through there yesterday. And I have no idea what the weather's going to be like in the last week of March and the first week of April. It could be pretty soft by then, so.
I know you only go on a short distance. What do, what do feed trucks keep going through that? Are they half-load?
No. No, the, the feed trucks are exempt.
I don't think so. They just don't get caught.
Fair enough.
Right. Any other comment? Question? We need a recommendation? Anyone want to make a recommendation on accepting this exemption from the half-load restriction on Floridale Road that Mr. Martin and the two Mr. Martins are requesting? Councilor Murrahann?
Sorry, I don't want to put a recommendation forward. I wouldn't mind hearing from staff just about, about their road and what their opinion would be. This doesn't sound a whole lot different than a couple of weeks ago, we talked about Bloomingdale. I'm just wondering if, if it is the same kind of situation we're dealing with. Maybe staff could, could answer that for us.
Sure, through, thank you, through Chair Redicop to Councilor Murrahann. I think staff will take the same position that they always have taken. We do have the bylaw in effect to protect the road network. When the only exemption staff would recommend if we know that the road is due up for reconstruction, case in point, would be Greenhouse Road in Bresla. There's a situation too on Snyder's Flats Road that's, that's, that will be coming to council's attention as well. But outside of that, we don't recommend exemptions be granted. But it certainly is in, in council's authority to, to grant exemptions.
Kind of a non-answer.
Comments? Want to make a, Councilor Shons?
Yeah, thank you through you to Jared. So what is the construction of that section of road? Is it township or is it pavement or what is it?
Through Chair Redicop to, to Councilor Shons, I believe it's asphalt, but I don't, I can't definitively say. I know that what Mr. Martin is speaking of, I was involved with the Floridale culvert replacement there, so I know that that is new. There is no load restriction on the bridge itself. Then of course, there was some work done at either end of the bridge that would be in good shape. But certainly from Floripine to the structure, I would agree, is not, not in great shape, but I believe it's asphalt.
Yes, it is asphalt.
Councilor Martin?
Thank you. I would say this is a lot different than what we did in Bloomingdale because that is the extension we gave where it ended today. And the weather we've had until today, we haven't had real warm weather, so we haven't had a lot of frost coming out of the ground, a lot of movement. But certainly by the end of March, it's going to be a totally different story. So I have reservations on on giving the exemption for that. If you start doing that, we have to do it for everybody.
That's Councilor Martin's perspective. Anyone want to say anything else? I don't have a mover or a seconder, so I guess we won't, let's, what's the?
There's no motion on the floor.
There's no motion on the floor. Okay, thank you, Ms. Martin, for your presentation this evening. Hey, our next delegation this evening is another staff report. Stockyards official plan amendment, zoning bylaw amendment, plus environmental assessment. This evening, we have Jerry Vink, manager of planning, to provide council with an overview of his report. Mr. Vink, you may begin when you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council. So bear with me a little bit. Tonight is a longer report, so a bit of longer conversation and review. So this is the Stockyard Secondary Plan that we're bringing forward along with the zoning bylaw amendment that corresponds. So essentially, the Stockyard Secondary Plan will be implemented in the Township's official plan. So as such, yes, it has to match with everything. So first of all, it does have to conform to provincial policy. So as staff outlined in the report, the plan does conform to the provincial policy statement of place to grow, attracting growth into an urban area and full services and seeing infilling and development appropriately within those areas. We also then have to conform to the regional official plan. So the regional official plan, the one that's currently in effect, takes us to 2031. So the Stockyard Secondary Plan is to fall within, development's supposed to take place up until 2031. The lands are designated urban in the regional official plan, which is the same designation as the City of Waterloo, City of Cambridge and the City of Kitchener Lands, as well as as someone of Bresla and Woolwich. So same designation for all those communities. Growing to those same densities and designs and some same amount of development should be taking place, basically. So in the regional official plan, there are specific policies in a section of the regional official plan talking with the stockyards. So staff did go through those policies that are outlined in the report section, sections 2D, 28 of the ROP. Speaks specifically there to the King 86 Power Center and the size it's allowed to be as per the approval in the past. It speaks to any changes we want to do because it was considered that at some point, the Stockyard Secondary Plan would come forward and there would be some changes in the area. In the, obviously to correspond to the regional official plan, bringing it to an urban designation and to see some changes match with that. So there are policies in there that will be complying to, that we're matching into. A municipal comprehensive review is required as part of this, some of these changes. Now, the township can't do the municipal comprehensive review. It is a regional element that will take place after. I'll touch at that, on that at the end again, about the municipal comprehensive review and the process that region will take. This is the framework, the heavy component of saying, what do we want to see this, these lands develop like? What do we see the future of the stockyards to move away from what it was as a small industrial commercial settlement to an urban area and how's that going to grow? As part of this also, we were introduced with the geese lands that were added in the ROP process. These are lands on the west end of the settlement, which are designated as posed. I'll go through that tonight later on for office space. The only restriction in the regional official plan on these lands are that they are not to be residential. So there is no other restriction on these lands. They could be industrialized, commercialized, just can't have residential. So I just want to make that very clear. And just should be noted that there is no policy around those lands that they can't see some broadening of uses on them in terms of commercial. So there's a bit of variation and depending which section of the settlement that we're talking about. However, you know, as per the regional official plan, staff reviewed it, said there's various sections of official plan. Sections 2, B, C, D and G, which I don't expect you all care about, to know about, but we reviewed them internally. Went through everything in detail, reviewed this with the region and provided them comments and how we addressed them. So the region has reviewed that. We have identified most of this in the, in this report. And staff feel that we've addressed the regional official plan and are in conformity with it as far as we can take it. The rest will be the next step with the region of Waterloo. As part of this, we had to go through some planned function components. That was a requirement. So the Stockyard Secondary Official Plan will address those, the planned function of the area will be on full municipal services through a cross-border servicing agreement. Will be integrated, compact. You will be adding to a complete community. It will address the natural environment and the floodplain areas. Talk about transportation. You will talk about how we're integrating these commercial areas, the greenfield and the urban areas all together. So we do address all that in here as well as meeting the density that we're supposed to. Of 50, 40 people and jobs per hectare. That's the requirement for employment lands because we're not talking residential. So it will meet those requirements. In terms of the regional transit system, there is a connection here. The buses do run through the Stockyards area. Currently, there is no eye on running up to this area yet. However, there is an integration of the regional transit system into the area and it connects on Weaver and King Street. So there's a grid interaction with the transit system already. In terms of planning and development impacts, there are some reports that I'll go through a little later on that were addressed, done as part of the secondary plan. So we'll talk about those a little later. As part of this planned function, there's a vision statement. And this vision statement was captured with our consultants and council and the stakeholders in the area. And set about some guiding principles. How do we want this area to grow? What is our future for the Stockyards? What does this look like? So this was done at a community process, okay? So that led to that vision statement and those guiding principles. The guiding principles are outlined about economic development and the marketing, planning, design, the natural heritage and open space, the transit and then the infrastructure. And they set some broad principles about how we want this area to develop. And from that, we flow into these land use designations. And the land use designations, which are in the map on there, in the official plan. So we have different areas there. We've got the industrial commercial area that wraps around the outer edges. The commercial office designation, which is the geese lands. The mixed-use commercial in the middle, Benjamin Road, the power center and existing area of the Walmart. And then some environmental protection designations in different key pockets where there is need to be protected. So those areas now fall under those, those principles of how we're going to see this area develop. They're going to, they tie back in and implement it. So overall vision, leading to these guiding principles, leading to these designations. And in each of these designations, you will see it says, this is what this area is expected to grow with. And then it outlines in detail what land uses can take place. So we start broad and work our way down. So it's, it is a very clear direction and statement of where we're heading with each area and what's anticipated. And with any chair. And then as we flow into the zoning bylaw, it captures all those land uses and carries them right over from the zone, official plan into the zoning. There are some key site-specific policy areas. So maybe I should just share my screen for that. I can't share my screen at the moment, so don't worry about it. So there's three special policy areas. The one is around the farmer's market, around the, the farmer's market itself, farmer's market road. Permitting a bit of wider range of retail uses along that area there. So we can see the creation of a a main street sort of function there with some commercial right up against the road and interacting that creates more of a pedestrian environment. The other special policy area is around the current outlet mall, which is dealing with the outlet mall and just allowing a little bit of flexibility in the retail. Because the current outlet mall is struggling and so we're just looking at some changes there to allow a bit more functionality, some traditional retail versus just outletting. The other site-specific policy area is number, number three is tucked in behind the outlet mall. There's existing house there and kind of in the woodlot. So there is opportunity there that there might be some opportunity for some development, but it needs to go through an environmental assessment. So there's additional works that can take place there with through an environmental impact study. And we could potentially see some development there. So a site-specific policy just around that area to say, yes, you can now potentially do some works there. Moving on, I can now share my screen, so I'm going to kind of pop that up. So yeah, there's area one along the farmer's market and the farmer's market itself. Area two is the outlet mall and area three is the area right below the green, that little small area that's tucked in behind the woodlot. There are some national environmental areas and open spaces. As you see the green here, this open space environmental protection area, which is the woodlot in the middle. And then we have these floodplain areas around the outer fringe on the north end here that do have some special natural heritage features to be looked after. Within the, within the plan itself, also as I mentioned, the geese lands, which are off to the west here at the bottom, just south of Apple Grove Road, the kind of the purplish with the green dot, those are lands that were added through the regional official plan. The official plan also, the secondary plan also talks about the public realm. So how we're going to integrate public realm into the site, into the area. Where I talk about pedestrian and the tourist train options and public parks, as well as the stormwater ponds and integrating them into everything. The policies also speak to sustainability and sustainable policies about development that includes some sustainable building designs. There's policies also that are tied in appendices, our urban design architectural controls to kind of outline the vision of what kind of the style of structures we're looking for. So that future development can carry forth with these development structures and kind of integrate these into it to see a cohesive nature of what we might see of development take place in there. Just to reflect the vision in the community that we're trying to accomplish. There is the infrastructure that we'll talk a bit about later in those reports and studies, just talking about how the services will be integrated from water sanitary, as well as the road infrastructure and transport and cycling and pedestrian infrastructure. And as I mentioned, the zoning implements, and this is the zoning bylaw, it's reflective of the official plan. So, you know, we get the different zones will match. The open space zones are protecting the woodlot and the, and there's the stormwater pond. The C9 is the area around the Benjamin Road area, which is the outlet mall and the existing hotels, motels. That's the mixed-use commercial areas. You've got the farmer's market in the middle here in the C8 zone. The other industrial commercial around the other fringe in the C8 zones with some holding provisions because we don't have the services there yet. So holding provisions to reduce, limit development until we have the full servicing. Same with the edge over here on the other side of the expressway, that small park portion over here. Power center, commercial in the middle here on the orange, which is existing area. And then the new geese lands in the far west with the C10 zone. So it'll reflect what's in the official plan for land uses. As I mentioned, there are some studies, the environmental, that went through to talk about the woodlot and then the wood, the new floodplain. I'm not going to go through that in any further detail. We did do a commercial impact study. It wasn't required in the regional official plan to do that. There's something that we just determined was appropriate to take a look at. To kind of give us an understanding of the, the planning implications that would be, happen as a result of this proposal and give us, you know, what the retail flexibility might be. So it was utilized to give us information to feed into this. There's numbers in the report. There's numbers that you're seeing from the City of Waterloo information. I don't want you to get overwhelmed by the numbers because the numbers look large somewhat, but just be realistic also. I don't want you to get overwhelmed by the numbers because the numbers look large somewhat, but just be realistic also too is understand that currently the stockyards could develop with a lot of lands, they're just sitting vacant. So even the power center lands have not developed fully, so there's a lot of land there that could have been developed even today. That aren't developed right now, that could have a fair amount of retail go in place between now and twenty thirty one, so. Just realistically saying, you know, there is a lot of land that's vacant that still could develop with different speed, different elements. Um, that could happen today even without the secondary plan, so. It's just outlining that these things can take place between now and twenty thirty one and we'll assist this with the secondary plan. I'll talk about the city of Waterloo's comments a little bit later. One thing I might want to just touch on is the commercial aspect, we did limit our complimentary commercial a little bit at the request of the city of Waterloo, so that did get altered, um, is in part of that, so we did scale back some of the retail. And clarify some retail for the city and change definitions already to address some of the city's concerns. We have a preferred servicing strategy, um. So there is a strategy for the sanitary, so there's some, there is going to be a need for a pumping station up at King and Weaver. For the sanitary to get collected and then pumped back towards the city of Waterloo, which is the recommended strategy. So there are some lands at the top end that will get into this service into this, uh, pumping station and then pumped towards the city of Waterloo. The geese lands will get connected at the bottom end, uh, towards Benjamin Road. And we will need to replace, uh, some water main sewer works within Benjamin Road too, so. There's a number of works that have to take place to allow this to see full on development in the future. Uh, on full services. There will be some additional EA work resulting with some of this, uh, with the force main work. Uh, water two is a key element, so that again is connecting with the city of Waterloo. We'll be trying to loop the services within the set, within the stockyards area, then full connecting back to the city of Waterloo. The stormwater, we have some ponds already, we'll be continuing to work with that pond that's existing, um, in off of the, off of the rail line to the south end in the middle. So that's already existing, we'll be utilizing that, there'll be some additional specific ponds for some of the smaller existing properties. But we're not anticipating another large pond for the township to take over. As noted, because we're working with the city of Waterloo, we will need a cross border servicing agreements where we work with the city. We are waiting to, for the city of Waterloo to commence their study of this, some of their downstream constraints for water and sanitary, so. Once that starts in twenty twenty one, we hope to be part of that process and then work into, um, you know, getting into a new cross border servicing agreement and doing what is necessary to then remove the holding provisions to see full on development, uh, in the stockyards area. There are some transportation improvements too for, uh, within the, within the area for, uh, different, uh, signalizations in certain spots, additional, uh, road networks, private road connections, uh, to integrate things and allow for, uh, traffic flow. As I noted, there's areas for walkways and pedestrian movements, the trail connections will be enhanced. Uh, and then we're going to add in, because there's a park proposed somewhat in the middle there on farmer's market and the trail. And the train section there, you know, just enhance that connectivity. Just so there's improvements there that need to take place for all that to work, and those are outlined in the report. There will be some, obviously then as a result of approving all this, we have to get into some DC funding options that will have to be addressed in the DC uh, development charges report, uh, later on and updated. That, just as you can note in the report, and I'm not sure what he's had the diligence to read through everything, but staff did go through responses to all the various stakeholders in a detailed matrix, so there's responses to all the community stakeholders with the comments they had to us. As well as the agencies. So that's all in the appendices, uh, staff highlighted in the report responses to the agencies, basically the region that we addressed with them and went through in detail. We've also went through this with the GRCA and addressed their concerns. And we went through this with the city of Waterloo and, and various processes here, and this will kind of touch on the city of Waterloo. So staff went through an extensive conversation with the city of Waterloo, so right from day one, when the project was initiated, the city of Waterloo was involved in the process. In twenty nineteen, the public meeting was held, the formal public meeting was held in June of twenty nineteen, where we asked, sent out comments and asked for agencies to provide their comments back to us. Township staff didn't receive formal comments, comments from city staff until later on in twenty nineteen, which is October. So that's the first time we heard back from them on this, on this report, so there's been a lot of back and forth from them since twenty nineteen, so, um, there was conversations starting in October, we met with them. Uh, in March of twenty twenty, they, we finally got another set of comments back from them in May of twenty twenty, and I note the date, uh, May twenty fifth, twenty twenty is when they gave us a set of comments. Highlighting that to you because the urban metrics report the city of Waterloo provided in their comments last week is dated May twelfth, so the city had that since May twelve, a finalized report, they had a draft version before that since early twenty twenty. They never provided us a copy, we have never seen that until last week of that urban metrics report, so. The May twentieth, twenty fifth, the city never gave us comments, but never provided that urban metrics report. We had a, a meeting with the city of Waterloo, Ron Palmer, myself, in the summer of twenty twenty. Were not provided a copy of that urban metrics report. Gain more dialogue back and forth, more responses, more information, there's some of the appendices that we outline comments to each of their concerns. And back and forth dialogue on a lot of items, but what we started to realize as we got further along in this process is that fundamentally the township's vision that was put together from the community process and the consultation differed substantially from the city of Waterloo staff's opinion and what their vision for the stockyards was and what their thoughts of what it should be. So as a result, we realized there is, we are two fundamentally different starting points. And that sets the whole tone of the total calling, to going two different directions. So as much as staff, township staff made changes and edits, and we've tried to accommodate as much as we can, we're at two fundamentally different starting points. So we, we're not going to hit a same endpoint at any point of time, so. Realize that's where we're coming from is that we're at two different standpoints, that's why the city's comments are very dramatic. Be different from what we're proposing in front of you, just because of what we're starting from and ending. But it's not that from lack of trying to move forward and knowing that this was the direction we're trying to head to. Uh, so staff, we have never received formal comments from the city of Waterloo themselves, it's only been staff comments, but they've had ample opportunity since June of twenty nineteen to give formal comments to the, what was provided to the community and the public back in the public meeting of June twenty nineteen, so. One last item I just going to touch on, this is not just the planning after process, there is an environmental assessment, so at the very end of the planning report, you will note that there is a step that could be completed on the municipal class environmental assessment portion. But outside of that, we're then, the recommendation is to bring this report to you, obviously for approval. And then we would move it to this region of Waterloo, so the regions and the township have been working together, we know the process, the next step is we feed this off to the region. The region will then take this and complete the municipal comprehensive review. They're proposing to do that through their ROP process that they're going through right now. So they'll merge it into their ROP process to finalize the implementation of the stockyard secondary plan. And that was, is likely to take place between, or let's say by early twenty twenty one. That then we will see this plan approved and then the zoning bylaws to be implemented, so. We've been working with the region jointly about how to proceed with all of this, so the recommendation before you tonight is to approve the, uh, proposed stockyard secondary plan and they proposed a zoning bylaw that is reflective of the stockyard secondary plan. If there is any questions, I can try and answer them and then Ron Palmer, our consultant is here this evening also, I'll answer any questions as necessary. And I know there are a few delegations who do wish to speak to some things tonight.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Vink for your good, concise, uh, presentation considering the length period. Uh, are there any questions for Mr. Vink, uh, councillor Sean, go ahead?
Yes, uh, thank you, through you to, uh, Mr. Vink. Uh, just a quick question on the Waterloo, uh, metrics, um. How far were we along, uh, in our, uh, design in May and May twelfth? And if we would have got the metrics back then, would we have changed direction or was it still too far gone at that point?
Through you, councillor, councillor Reddick, and Chair Reddick, talk to councillor Sean, yes. It would have allowed us to give a little more comprehensive response to the metrics, let's, that, you know, I wouldn't say we're ever too far gone, because like I said, we took a lot of time to go back and forth with the city of Waterloo and took a lot of measures to try and address some of their concerns. It would have helped us, yes, we could have maybe given them some better response, some additional responses to address some of their concerns that were in the metrics. But fundamentally, I think we're still at the same position, uh, at the end of the day today. With or without the urban metrics report, the vision from the city of Waterloo staff is fundamentally different than that of the, the recommendation report in front of you from staff and the consultant. So I don't think it would substantially have changed necessarily the end result.
And if I could just have a follow-up question? Go ahead. Um, so one of the, uh, um, concerns, I think from the Waterloo report was, uh, was, uh, supplying water to that area and, uh, needing to work on some water main sizes. And I know a couple of years ago, we came off of the expressway interval scout into Valley View. And is that an option and, uh, and do we have to use Waterloo for that source or can we go right down to the expressway or the highway eighty five to get it?
So, yes, councillor Sean, um, so right now, the, the preferred scenario and the better scenario is to, you know, is to run, uh, through the city of Waterloo, connect to their mains for looping. The main that is running up the expressway is a force main, so I'm not sure the region would let us tap into it or not. It would be an alternative if we had to, but through the cross border servicing agreement process and through the city's, the proposed study that they're doing in twenty twenty one, we hope to work with them to address whatever concerns need to be addressed in the city side. So we would ultimately see even potentially that if there's upsizing costs, whether it's water or sanitary on the city side, as a result of our development on our side. We'd be funding that through development charges and trying to address that for the city, so we'd collect funds to address those concerns and to see those works take place, so. Um, there's still a lot of work to be done on the cross border servicing agreement side.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Vink? Uh, Mayor Sean, go ahead.
Thank you, um, through you to, to Jeremy. Jeremy, the region, is the region on board with, with our vision here?
Uh, yes, Mayor Sean, so. In the fall of last year, the township staff went through a, ran through the regional official plan and reviewed everything with them, as well as giving drafts. The drafts at that time of the stockyard secondary plan zoning, so they could review everything to make sure they were on on the same page as we were, that they could buy into everything. So on the fall of last year, uh, I think it was around November, the city, the region staff did give us comments and said, yeah. It does conform to the regional official plan as best it can, and we'll have to go through the municipal comprehensive review process and we're basically on board with what you proposed. So we have that understanding from the regional staff that they're basically on board, subject to going through the municipal comprehensive review, went through the ROP process that they have to complete.
Thank you, this, um, just, just a comment that would, um, you know, we, we do try to, uh, be good neighbors and, uh, and I think everybody get along, but in the end, I, I think it's our vision that, um, needs to prevail in, in what happens here, so, um, I, I just add that as a, notwithstanding we'll negotiate with, with other stakeholders, but, um, you know, in the end, uh, if our visions are quite different, um, this is our development and, and our land, and so I, I would just make that point.
Councillor Reddick, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, through you, uh, councillor Reddick, uh, just as we're kind of on the topic of, of, uh, our neighbor, I, I, I kind of want to make sure that it's well known, um, the history of this property and the city of Waterloo. And, uh, I was pretty disappointed with the over hundred, uh, comments that, uh, city of Waterloo made that basically all came down to, we don't want competition for, uh, the city of Waterloo. Um, and if they're going to hold Woolwich Township to a thirty year old, uh, document, uh, about the outlet area, um. You know, let's remember when they were doing that, they, uh, held up the, the development of that property so that they could put in, uh, Staples and Home Depot and do their mini power center, uh, right on the border of Woolwich Township, uh, and to uh, make sure that there wasn't any competition for, uh, for Woolwich Township, so I, I don't want that uh, to be forgotten, and the other thing that I want to mention is, uh, since that time and since, uh, I've been on council now, uh, there's an economic development corporation that, uh, all the, the cities and the municipalities pay into. And the premise there that was bought into by all of the members was that, uh, we all benefit no matter where the development happens. And I really wish the city of Waterloo planning staff, uh, could maybe get on board with that. Um, and, uh, and, and encourage that because this development and, uh, its uh, purpose in the region will benefit everybody, so I, I hope that message, uh, can be delivered loud and clear. Um, but anyway, I was going to save that for later, but we're all talking about it, so, okay.
Councillor Reddick?
Thank you, Chair, through you, um, just a question of timing. Um, I apologize if this was covered or if I got it completely wrong, but Mr. Vink, I thought you said that the original plan is still going to be enforced until twenty thirty one? And then this secondary plan will then take effect? And then does it take effect for a certain period of time or does this, once this is approved, then it's the new, um, approved document going forward?
Oh, yes, through Mr. Chair to councillor Dylan, so no, this plan, once it gets approved by the region, will be enforced in effect and it will carry us to twenty thirty one, it's meant to carry us to twenty thirty one for now. Now, at some point, we will have to amend it before twenty thirty one because the province changed the timelines to twenty fifty one and the region's going through the ROP process now to change the timelines to twenty fifty one. So at some point between now and twenty thirty one, we will be doing some revisions uh, to the secondary plan, and maybe it's a different secondary plan, this take us to twenty fifty one. So there will be growth, and that's natural, just by the way, too, we usually review an official plan and sections over time to adjust as necessary, so. This new plan will come into effect with the region implementing it hopefully in twenty twenty one with the ROP review process.
Perfect, thank you, and then Chair, do you mind if I quick follow up? So when do we expect those revisions to happen between twenty twenty two and twenty thirty one, is that like twenty twenty six or is that like twenty thirty and a half?
So generally speaking, there's a, somewhere around five years you take a thorough review and have a look, um, I we'd be more doing a review late twenty, the late twenty twenties. So, um, twenty twenty eight, twenty twenty nine, maybe was, they were, we start triggering a bit more of a review. Something else could trigger the review in the interim, um. You know, if there's a major fundamental change and let's say all it's left and it totally changed the fundamentals, because if your vision ties back to the farmer's market area, there is a fundamental change in that function. We might have to review things too, so, uh, there's options to pick it up at any point if necessary, but probably late twenty twenties, that will go into it.
Councillor Reddick, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, I was going to save this for later, but Mr. Vink's comments lead pretty well into this, I've, I've talked a couple of times about, I, I residential's been requested for this area, and I think this is one of the only areas we have in Woolwich Township where high density, um, residential makes sense, I, I don't think it makes sense in in Elmira or St. Jacobs, um, or Bresla, I think this is one area where it does make sense, I'm happy to hear that it could be triggered, uh, or new plan could be triggered by something, um, you know, like a a housing crisis, I think we're already in a housing crisis, but if it got worse, that could trigger it. Um, I, I saw the other night, the city of Kitchener, um, is discussing the possibility of opening up greenfield development and changing the country line. And I think if we were in a situation where we needed housing, um, I, I would be much more in favor of putting in dense housing in this area than changing our country line and having sprawling subdivisions that cost too much money, so. Um, I, I'm happy to go along with this, if, if we know that a, a triggering event like a rapid expansion of population like we've seen in the last few years, um, you know, changes the region's population growth plan. you know, changes the region's population growth plans where they expect Woolwich to have more population growth. You know, if that were to happen, if that could be a triggering event that could change this, this plan, then I'm happy going forward with it the way that it is. So thank you, Mr. Vink.
Council Redicop to Mr. Phil. So yes, you know, the major trigger could happen. It would be top-down because the region had, for the most part, hadn't anticipated residential or here assigned any growth in that sense. So if through the rock process, they trigger that and change, make some changes to give intensity into the stockyards area, it could reflect in a new change. Like I mentioned, we, because of some of the OLX, which is, you know, obviously a bit of livestock area in the area, and some of the industrial uses, we'd have to review where would be appropriate. So there is some compatibility questions right now that would exist, whether it's appropriate to bring residential into some of the areas. So doesn't mean it can't, but it would come down from the region that we would see some growth in terms of residential assigned to us into this area that would trigger a change in our approach. The current secondary plan, just for clarity, what we're doing, it went in clearly stating that there was no consideration of residential, and that was set out right from the beginning in the beginning of the process, that we were not considering residential anywhere in here, and it was not part of the stockyard secondary plan as part of this process. So it would, obviously, like I mentioned, we could go back and review it as necessary if there's a change.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any more questions for Mr. Vink. We'll go on to the three. Oh, sorry, Council Martin, sorry, Minister.
It's a little unusual that we had this much discussion before we hear from our delegations. But I would like to send for identity. It was only today that we had any correspondence from Smart Centers and Schlegel Group. And I was thinking that they were active participants in the secondary plan. We should be here tonight with this recommendation with very few things to deal with. But since both groups have a number of things that they want to address, if we approve this tonight, how are they going to be addressed?
Yes, through you too, Council Martin. So yes, there are comments from them, and I'll let them go through their comments. I was going to let them do their presentation and kind of respond. Generally, for the most part, I think we can address them fairly. Staff can give you a response, basically. Some of them may need some tweaking if that is necessary, and council gives direction to do that. And some elements with Schlegels, Schlegels, we might be able to do that. We would bring forward the revised amendments on the 23rd and give council an update, whether it's just a verbal of what changes were made or a brief memo of what changes might be made. So what we're looking at tonight, I don't think will substantially change from what's in front of you, even with their comments. So maybe, you know, if they go through them, I can kind of respond to them and give you some comments back. Yeah.
Okay. Seeing no other people wanting to ask Mr. Vink more questions, we have three delegations listed on the agenda. First up is Neil DeRuder of William Geese Construction, M H B C Planning. Mr. DeRoder, you may turn your video and microphone on. You have ten minutes to speak to council. You begin, you begin when you're ready.
Evening, Chair Redicop and, and members of council. My name's Neil DeRider. I'm a planner with M H B C Planning, and I'm here tonight on behalf of William Geese Construction. Our client owns the lands on the west side of Weber between Benjamin and Apple Grove. I'll, I'll keep my remarks fairly brief. What, what I do want to say is our client is very supportive of the process that's been undertaken here. I think this is an exciting project for the township. I think township staff's done an excellent job in, in engaging the, the local community and coming up with a vision that's well-rounded and, and reflects this area and the future potential that's available. And I think particularly for our clients' lands, which were added to the urban boundary about five years ago. You know, we, we're thankful for, for the discussions that have taken place with our client. I'll, I'll start by saying we are supportive of the proposed designation on, on Mr. Geese's property, which is commercial office. We're also supportive of identifying this property as part of the gateway. I, I think as well, the, the permitted uses or the proposed permitted uses that staff have laid out, we also support. I think there's a level of flexibility provided for this site while still overlining with the overall objectives and, and planning principles behind the stockyards area. And, and just, just so council's aware, th- this is a property that's just under thirty acres. And, and so I think there's obviously a lot of opportunity that comes along with this now that it's within the urban boundary. And I think the, the plan that, that's in front of you, that staff's put forward adequately proposes that. I would say, given the details in the plan, there are a few matters that we do want to discuss with staff, and we have provided our comments to staff. And I, and I want to just make sure for council, in no way does it suggest that we are opposing this plan or that we don't want to see it proceed. There are a couple of questions that we have, and, and in particular, it relates to the provision surrounding the gateway and ensuring what we believe is an intent to see increased height and density along Weber is then implemented in the zoning. And, and we picked up a couple of areas where it would appear to us there's an inconsistency between what's included in the, in the proposed official plan for our client's site and, and what's included in the zoning. So we would really appreciate the opportunity to discuss those directly with staff prior to the amending bylaws being presented to council in a couple of weeks. There, there are a couple other minor corrections that we've noted. I, I don't think they fundamentally change what the plan's doing, and I, I won't take up council's time tonight to go through any of them. Staff are aware of them, and I think what we are asking is, is for the ability to discuss those with staff directly. I think a lot of them we can come to a resolution on before the council meeting. I would also like to speak, and I wasn't prepared to do this, but we just got the comments from the city of Waterloo late last week, and, and as Council Merlin noted, they are lengthy. I didn't want to speak to it, but I think it's opportune time, given that the, the city Waterloo staff have specifically raised concerns regarding the proposed designation and permitted uses on our client's property. And, and so what council's aware of is the city is asking the township to limit permitted uses on our client's site to only those related to employment, so strictly office, campus, and potential industrial. And what, what I would say is, we certainly don't support the city's position. And, and I'll, and I'll say just in a couple of things, and one of them Jeremy touched on, so I don't want to go at it, at, at too much length. But it's important to know from a regional official plan perspective for our client's site, the, the use restrictions only applies to residential. It does not state that only office uses are permitted on this property. So that's first and foremost. The second thing what I would note is, and, and I'll say this based on just quickly reading the city's comments, I think there's a, a feeling that the stockyard should be focusing on tourism and experience-oriented uses. So with that in mind, we kind of questioned then why for a client's property should just be limited to, to basically an office campus. I'd, I'd also note, we're having trouble understanding if, if uses are just limited to an office campus, what's the likelihood that you could build out a thirty-acre property in a post-pandemic world? And, and we struggle to figure out how that sort of fits in with the overall objectives and principles behind what's going to happen in the stockyards area. And I think we're, we're questioning why you would want to arbitrarily limit potential on a thirty-acre greenfield site. The other part of it is there are specific uses that have been put in the official plan amendment in consultation with the township, which I would consider to be uses that require large lot sizes such as convention centers, hospitality, entertainment and cultural facilities. And these are types of specific or niche uses that require a lot of land. And do we necessarily want to close the door, particularly when I would argue that a lot of those uses fit in with the overall objective and, and principles behind what's happening in the stockyards area? So I apologize, I didn't want to get into the city's comments, but I felt it was needed just given that there is a specific recommendation to limit the uses on our, on our client's property. And, and yeah, just as the, the last summary, we, we would really appreciate just the opportunity, have the discussion with township staff before the amending bylaws are brought before council. We hope that there's a way we can address or resolve these. Obviously, once they go in, it'd be easier if we can get this worked out before that happens. So we would appreciate staff's time in, in helping us understand and maybe come to a resolution on some of those matters. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions of council.
Any questions for Mr. DeRoder? Seeing none. Thank you very much for your presentation this evening.
Thank you.
Turn your camera off and your microphone off. Next up is Vaughn Bender, and he's accompanied by Alex Van Der Slus, who are of Schlegel Urban Developments. Mr. Bender and Mr. Van Der Slus, you may just turn your videos on and your microphone. You have ten minutes to speak to council, and you begin when you are ready.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I, I hope you can hear me. I, I can't seem to turn my video on right now. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you and we can see you.
Oh, perfect, okay. So Vaughn Bender with Schlegel Urban Developments, and pleased to be here on behalf of Schlegel and the Schlegel family. And thank you for the time to address the committee this evening. We have had one opportunity which we appreciated to speak with township staff since the report was made public. And we appreciate, you know, it's a, it's a lengthy document. It's been a long time in the making. And you have a lengthy agenda this evening as well. So we provided a written letter, which I believe you have before you, and we'll try not to repeat the comments that we've made in the letter. One of the key points we wanted to make this evening was that we believe we've arrived at a way forward to reinvigorate the Outlet Mall building. And the outlet was no doubt ahead of its time when it was first developed by the previous owners, the Shants family, in terms of, of outlet retail. But as Mr. Vink alluded to, it has certainly been struggling in the last number of years. And it is very much out of step with the current outlet shopping experience. You layer into that the acceleration of the transformation of retail or traditional retail as a result of COVID. And therefore, our re-envisioning and investment into that building now becomes even more critical, I would say, for the district. We have started, we did start reorganizing vacant space in that building about a year ago before the pandemic hit. We put up a sign that something was brewing at the Outlet Mall. And I'm, I'm pleased to say tonight that the good news is that, that, that project continues to brew. The, the restaurant, meeting space, event space that we envisioned for a, a good portion of that building continues to, to develop, and we will be in a position to move that forward very, very shortly. We think it is very much in keeping with the vision that was outlined early on in the secondary planning process for the stockyards. It's very much in keeping with the, the goals and objectives that were laid out in terms of destination-type activities in the Stockyard District. And we think it's very much a fit as well, of course, with our Schlegel vision to continue the St. Jacobs Farmers Market as the experience it is for showcasing and providing business opportunities for local Woolwich products, local food, opportunities to connect others to our Mennonite and multi multicultural roots in the region, and so on. Obviously, the synergies with theater and hotel are tremendous as well. So that's some good news from our side. At a high level, we're pleased to say that the secondary plant, plan framework largely enables us to continue that objective to move the project forward. And I'm going to stop there and let Alex, my colleague, just jump in with a few more specifics as relate to some of the planning policies.
Thanks very much, Vaughn, and, and thank you to committee for, for your time this evening. My name is Alex Van Der Slus. I'm a project manager with Schlegel Urban Developments. And I'm just going to quickly run through a, a couple of the highlights from our letter. The, the first topic is on the Outlet Mall, as Vaughn explained, we have, today, we have, we have a redevelopment plan for the Outlet Mall that actually fits within the existing planning framework and, and land use permissions. But due to the more specific nature of definitions and land use allocations in the secondary plan, there's actually a couple of conflicts that we've identified and, and we outlined in our letter and in our meeting with Jeremy last week, some potential resolutions to those conflicts that we feel are, you know, again, in keeping with the spirit of the secondary plan and, and the direction of the vision for the area. The second topic I'd like to touch on is Jeremy mentioned earlier in his presentation that there is site-specific zoning being put in place along Farmers Market Road, which will activate the streetscape. It will provide for built form at the street edge, and, and will help to pedestrianize that section of Farmers Market Road. And, and it's our position, and we had submitted this comment in 2019 as well for consideration, that there may be an opportunity for a, a different kind of street cross-section in that area. Current, currently, there's a plan to, to redevelop or rebuild Farmers Market Road with a, a large central median running down the middle of the street. But, but we would put forward that to, you know, further enable the creation of the main street character that Jeremy referenced and which we see as a, an absolute, you know, positive for this area, would be to introduce on-street parking onto Farmers Market Road. We think this would serve a, a couple of goals. It would, when you have on-street parking on a street, it helps to create some, some friction on the street and, and leads to some natural traffic calming. And it would also help serve the, the commercial businesses that will be directed to locate at the street through the site-specific zoning. So, so we submit that for your consideration, and we'd be happy to talk about that more with staff. I, I would also point out that Benjamin Road would also be a, a good candidate for on-street parking, especially given the, the changing nature of the zoning in there to become more of a mixed commercial node. That might be a, a different option that the township could explore. And, and the last one is to do with parkland within the stockyards area. So on, on Schedule A, the land use plan, conceptually identifies several park locations within the stockyards area. And I, I would just say that it, the sort of evolution of the stockyards is very much in process. There's been a few, you know, recent significant investments and, and development projects that have taken place in the district. And, and recognizing the sort of sensitivity of the, the condition and, and the in-process nature, we would advocate for, you know, the, a, a gentle touch or some flexibility from, from the municipality as they, as to how they will acquire or implement those parks. There are options, obviously, through the, the policy that's being put in place, the, the township will now have the ability to acquire parkland through dedication or to fund parkland acquisition through cash-in-lie policies. And, and we would just appreciate continued transparency from, from the municipality as to how they see the, the park spaces being implemented. And, and because the locations of the parks on Schedule A are conceptual, it may actually be a, a benefit to the municipality to identify more conceptual locations to enable flexibility down the road. And, and for example, on our, our own property at the Farmers Market property at 878 Weaver Street, we, we believe that the, the location just north of the intersection of Benjamin Road and Farmers Market Road at the the terminating Vista as you head north and you sort of come upon the Farmers Market Building itself may also be a, a suitable location for outdoor active and passive recreation. And so that, this is just another point that we offer for, for township's consideration.
You have one more minute?
I'm going to go ahead and wrap it up right now. So I thank you, committee and, and staff for, for all of your work to date. This has been a long process. I'm sure Jeremy and others before him will attest to that. And, and we look forward to working with staff over the next weeks and months as this continues to unfold. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Do you have any questions for either Mr. Bender or Mr. Van Der Slus? Nope, thank you very much. Council, there is a recommendation in your report. Would anyone like to move the recommendation that's included in your agenda and in the reports that we are given by staff? Council Martin, moves it a seconder? Counsel Schontz? Any other comments or questions? Sorry, Counsel Merlehan, go ahead.
Yeah, through you, Counsel Redicop, to Jeremy. At the beginning of this, before the delegations came on, you said you had responses to some of those. Can you just kind of tick off the boxes of Mr. DeRuyter had one and Alex had a number there that if you could comment on some of those?
Thank you, Counsel Merlehan. Really appreciate it. Yes, so for the Geese Lands with Mr. Ryder there, so, you know, we will chat with them. They have a few specific questions. One around the gateway site and giving the flexibility right now to the height. We haven't done that anywhere in the gateways, but we can talk to them about it if they have some special ideas of how they might think that could be incorporated right now in absence of a design at this time. In terms of the size, though, I just have to note they want an increase in the size. We're governed by the Place to Grow document, which limits us for major offices and anything below 4,000, 4,000 and below. So since it's not a major office area and not designated that or can't be designated that at this point, I can't go above the 4,000. The other items he has on there, there are a number of little items, but we can check those off easily and address those and so, yeah, definitely converse with them to finish some of that up and not a problem whatsoever. In terms of the Schlegels with theirs, you know, they have specific requests around the banquet facility, you know, staff chatted with them on Friday morning with this, you know, we've reviewed it. We could add a banquet facility with it within the broader concept of what's there already, even the commercial entertainment that's now created. So we could easily add that in the secondary plan and the zoning. It's consistent. They had a few other questions. We are just, we can easily clarify those. There's no impacts there on the restaurant space and yeah, what sizes, we can clarify those answers around the parkland. Honestly, if, you know, if it's fitting the vision, we're definitely at the table to talk about ways to make it work. And if there's public-private partnerships they want to talk about on parkland or elements there, you know, things are on the table. We're going to work with the vision. This is just a demonstration plan showing how it might look. But there is obviously potentially different ways and we can get the parklands to work and accomplish that vision. So definitely it's not written in stone. So we will work with them and whichever way it works potentially best to work with all of us to accomplish the goals. You know, we do have to be cautious what retail uses we do permit with the city of Waterloo already kind of concerned about any retail, but you know, whatever we can do to work with them a little bit, we will do, but I don't think we'll be able to open up the retail in some of the other areas. But like I said, we will work with them on the Outlet Mall. There's flexibility there to address their concerns and make that work with their, I think, what they're trying to accomplish. So I think there's room there and we can easily make those changes in the next two weeks and accomplish what I think both Schlegels and Geese are already asking is just keep it moving and let's proceed forward, so.
Counsel Merlehan, you have follow-up and then Mayor Schontz.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Counsel Redicop. Through you again to Jeremy. Just wondering if you could address the on-street parking that the Schlegels had brought up and also in the plan, the medians that are kind of displayed in the picture, is that is that just conceptual or is that actually something that you want to do? Because I'm not a huge fan of medians either, so.
So they are conceptual. All that maybe Ron just jumped on, you know, and add to them, but anything you can do that would enhance that mainstream theory and function? Or will they take a look at, they would go at the time when we do a redevelopment on the street, would go through a consultation process like we do in any street. So there would be opportunity to review that design in the end, but I'll also let Ron jump in here because it's his design and he might want to touch on it.
Yes, thank you, Jeremy. The issue of the median and particularly where it's located was in response to a very specific issue and the problem that you have today is you have hundreds, when the when the Stockyards is in full operation on a Saturday afternoon, you have hundreds of people indiscriminately walking across Farmers Market Road. And the goal with the median was to provide, I don't want to call it a granny catcher, but it is a barrier to funnel the pedestrians who are today unsafely crossing to cross at a lit intersection with Benjamin Road. So the idea is that the the median would only be, I just want to get the names of the streets, right? From Weaver Street to just past Benjamin, to funnel the pedestrians to a safe lit crossing of Farmers Market Road. As far as on-street parking goes, sure, the road cross-section identified in the demonstration plan and design guidelines is purely conceptual. We worked through those with our traffic engineer. And the introduction of on-street parking is something that absolutely could be considered in detailed design in consultation with the traffic engineers to ensure that the traffic flow is appropriately dealt with. These roads can be very busy, as you all know, when the Stockyards is in full swing. So we have to be mindful of the ability to park, the ability to activate the street, to make pedestrians safe and to make the functionality of the street network work as best as we can on those days when the market is in full swing.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Thank you.
Mayor Schontz and then Counsel McMillan and then Counsel Schontz.
Thank you. It sounds like the plan is very flexible and is a high-level plan and that you can work with with the landowners to sort of massage it a little bit for the next meeting. If there is something that's a sticking point, is this time sensitive?
After Mr. Vink?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, to the Mayor Schontz. It's not the end of the world. We don't want to stall the plan or process, so we wouldn't want to drag on, but like I said, I think most of these items are minor that we're going to be addressing. I don't think there are sticking points. If they are sticking points, they're major sticking points that we just can't change anyway. So I think we can come back on the 23rd with fairly easily with whatever is necessary to move it forward. So I don't foresee any issues that are just going to stop the plan. I think as Mr. DeRuyter mentioned too is, you know, there's a few things, if he's got time to chat with us and we can work it out, he doesn't see a reason why it couldn't be worked out. So I don't see any reason that we'd have to delay it any further.
If I may just, one more question? And I think it was when Mr. Bender was talking about parks or maybe it was Mr. Van der Slus, trees, we have a very active tree planting plan. Is that part and parcel of when you talk about providing parkland and that kind of space? Would that be included in there? I know we have people in the community that would ask that question, so.
Yes, Madam Chair, Madam Mayor, so trees wouldn't be parkland. Parkland would be somewhat of an active or passive space for publicly to utilize. Trees would be, you know, through our design guidelines, we do require that trees be spread out on parking lots around the perimeter of properties just to soften the areas and to soften the hard surfaces. So tree areas alone wouldn't necessarily be called a park. If it's a larger area that we're encouraging the public to utilize in some form or fashion, whether it's just sitting or an interactive space, that's what we call as a parkland and be more an active space. So outside of that, we have the passive, the other passive space or active spaces would be trails. So we'd be more inclined to be an actual physical space a certain light, a certain area with, you know, would include trees or sitting areas and parking benches and things like that would be more active on it. Within the developments themselves, they would have their own maybe private space in the office areas that they would have some personal space that's private for them to have for staff in the office areas. If they have a major office, they'd have a little picnic shelters, et cetera.
So maybe I'll ask it a different way. In view of the fact that we have articulated an emphasis on the environment, is the secondary plan a place where we would discuss that or talk about that or make some kind of a commitment of some sort in the secondary plan or would that just be part and parcel of further development?
So in the secondary plan, there is the elements of on the open space and the protection of the woodlot that's there today and preserving it. So it has to be preserved and protected. There is policies and regulations around that, preserving that environmental feature. There is policies in the secondary plan about the floodplain on the north end to protect that environmental feature. So there is sustainability policies and there is features, there is policies in the secondary plan around those elements. The design guidelines do get into enhancing and doing sustainability and providing well-built constructed areas that we would and properties, right? So that's where you're going to see the enhancement of in our current design guidelines would apply like trees and tree plantings in our parking lots or things along those lines. We will see that in as part of the plan. So that is part of this as well as the sustainability guidelines in the policies, talk about even urban design for buildings to be sustainability, to improve energy efficiency like and, you know, reducing wastewater issues, low-flush toilets. All that's even in the policies too. So we're looking at it comprehensively for sustainability in the secondary plan.
Thank you.
Counsel McMillan?
Thank you, Chair Redicop. Just in response to Mr. Palmer's comments about the traffic engineers and needing to move traffic. I understand traffic engineers want to move traffic, but I would hope that wouldn't be prioritized in an area like Benjamin Road, Farmers Market Road, when you've got King Street and Weaver Street that could be used for throughways. We want to prioritize what's best for the businesses and we were talking about pedestrian safety earlier and having boulevards for pedestrians for pedestrian safety. Nothing's safer for pedestrians than cars moving slower. So I think if the cars have to move slower through there, I think that that should not be something that becomes a greater priority than business, what's good for the businesses and what's good for pedestrians there.
Thank you. Just Counsel Schontz?
Thank you. Through you to, probably Mr. Palmer would be the best person to answer this question since it's his design. We're talking about on-street parking and wondering how angled parking works in a case like that because it's easy to get in and out of and for parking and it also brings back a little bit of the old town feel. So would that be something that you would consider?
Well, it'll be something that you might want to consider. There's certainly nothing that would preclude you from exploring that. Although I did work for the Town of Collingwood once and their main street has all angled parking. Easy to get in, not as easy to get out. However, it's a really nice road cross-section in downtown Collingwood and it the angled parking certainly provides much more parking opportunity than just parallel parking. So where you have the right of way. And as Counsel McMillan said, it's all about the balance of pedestrian comfort and safety, serving the adjacent businesses and also moving traffic. Parking is a key element. As development occurs in some of your larger spaces in the Stockyards, some of that is going to be the removal of parking. So parking is going to become a little more precious and absolutely the road right of way can be part of that supply.
Thank you. Any other questions? We have a motion on the table. Call for the question. All those in favor of this motion that is in your documents, please raise your hand. Okay, that's passed unanimously. Thank you very much for all the conversation. Thank you for the delegations that came on that. So the next delegation this evening is Alex Mustakis from Drayton Entertainment requests for support and Counsel Merlehan has declared disciplinary interest. So he'll leave the meeting for now. Alex Mustakis with us this evening from Drayton Entertainment with a request for support for council. Mr. Mustakis, you may turn your video and microphone on. You have 10 minutes to address council and you may begin when you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mayor Schontz, members of council and staff for allowing me to be appear before you this evening, all the way from my home in West Monroes. Nice to be able to come in from the cold and being out on that window ledge. There was no point in jumping though because it's only two feet, so I would have just embarrassed myself, but here I am. Let me begin by applauding the township for its efforts to keep everyone safe, informed and supported in the midst of this historic pandemic. I don't envy any of you for the decisions you have to make when so many sectors are in need. I'm sure all of you know that Drayton Entertainment is an award-winning charitable arts organization that produces professional live theater as a circuit of seven venues throughout the province of Ontario. We've been operating in St. Jacobs since 1997 when we expanded our operations beyond the original Drayton Festival Theater. I must say, over the past 24 years, we've never asked for nor received any community grant or investment to support our annual operating costs to either of the St. Jacobs venues. And I, you know, I do apologize for actually having to be here tonight. We have met the township's educational and social needs through innovative programs designed to engage at every age and stage of life. This includes a robust volunteer program, arts training program for young professionals, school mat maids, arts training and our youth musical theater program, just to name a few. And these theaters also benefit the community, not only culturally, but economically. I should tell you that the cancelled 2020 season would have consisted of almost 300 performances and attendance reaching about 70,000. The theater would have yielded about $17.5 million in visitor spending in the local area. And that's based on the Government of Ontario's Tourism Regional Economic Impact Model with 45% of audience traveling over 40 kilometers to the destination. And an additional 15,000 would have frequented these two venues for other community events, including concerts, dance recitals, quilt show and many more. You know, our overall theater operations have been devastated by the impact of the pandemic and the reality is that we're looking at a multi-year recovery effort, as is the tourism, hospitality and travel sectors as well. We lost not only our ticket sales, but, you know, 100% of our revenue, which includes sponsorships, raffles, lounge sales. We couldn't sell Neil Heskey's Smooth and Delicious Ice Cream any further either. You know, but Drayton, I should tell you, is a rather unique in that since our inception, we've received zero operating funds from any level of government or arts council. And in contrast, most of professional theaters and performing arts facilities across the country do receive some type of annual operating support. We are also lucky compared to many of our industry peers in that we had the good fortune and vision to set up a stabilization fund 30 years ago to help just navigate a crisis like this. No one predicted a pandemic, but we did set money aside every year. And, you know, with the 2020 losses in the millions, we wouldn't have survived this had we not set up that reserve fund. Our doors, as you know, have been closed since March of 2020 and at this point, I personally don't see a light at the end of the tunnel. I'm hopeful that, you know, with vaccinations, hopefully, you know, in time for maybe a Christmas show would be ideal. We borne all the costs for the last year, but there are significant property maintenance costs that we have to look towards for 2021. And, you know, these are just actual building costs, just for hydro and gas and water and some length maintenance and you know, they, I think it'll be over $25,000 just to maintain the two venues here in St. Jacobs. And timing is everything. We just found out today that we need about $50,000 worth of repairs on our roof at the Playhouse. Uh, and uh, you know, when it rains, it pours. And today actually was raining water into the theater, so we've got to address this uh right away. Um, not the, you know, not not what we were expecting, but these are things that we have to do. Uh, and of course, uh, you know, the the twenty-five thousand or so does not include some of the things we can't uh turn off, like insurance and and snow removal and equipment maintenance and so on. And I and I'd like to say that uh that figure does not include uh represent any salaries whatsoever. Um, so uh, that that's kind of the situation that we're in uh at the moment. Um, we believe these two theaters, even though they're not municipal assets in the traditional definition of ownership, uh, that we respectfully maintain that they function as such as uh the purpose is to serve the community through uh culture, uh, to foster diversity and inclusion, stimulate the local economy through tourism and hospitality, and to, of course, educate our our youth. Um, I I would also like to say that uh the other municipalities where we operate have uh um uh come to the table with uh one-time assistance uh from each of the communities. Uh, we received uh a grant of a hundred ninety-two thou- uh ninety-two thousand from the city of Cambridge. The township of Mapleton, Little Drayton, um, pledged thirty thousand. Municipality of South Huron uh has come forward with twenty-five thousand and uh our friends in Penetang- Penetanguishing at Huronia Historical Parks at Discovery Harbor uh Harbor um have also uh taken on the operating costs in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. So uh, and I and I want to say that as important as the dollars are, the support is what validates the value of arts and culture in each of the uh each of the communities. And we are about to launch a uh recovery campaign, a grassroots recovery campaign. And it's uh, it really helps to be able to say that our our municipal leaders uh believe in us and and your support will help uh as well. Um, it is a, it is a lifeline from all these municipalities as uh we have been shut out from any uh federal and provincial uh arts funding grants. There was an announcement just this past week of uh twenty-five million dollars from the from the province. But it was directed at the Ontario Arts Council and the Ontario Arts Council just distributed it to its core clients, which is unfortunate. Um, you know, we're kind of victims of our own success because we've never uh been subsidized. And as a result, uh, we're shut out from the funding and uh and honestly, we're pursuing this. We're we're trying to see if there is an appeal process because we we shouldn't be uh punished because we are self-sufficient. So that's where we're at. Um, um, your support will certainly um ensure Drayton Entertainment Entertainment is able to eventually resume operations. And we will be a major source of socio-economic recovery uh for the township. And it's nice to be part of a discussion tonight about the uh the economic growth uh and the farmer's market uh uh location of which we're part of, and we will be part of that uh economic uh growth. It's been a tough time, uh, not only for our theater, but our artists as well. And we look uh forward to having them back. Um, you know, the uh, the mental health of our artists is has really taken a toll as well. And just like to say that uh, you know, the Charlie Chaplin, the comedian Charlie Chaplin once said, uh, I like to walk in the rain um so that no one can see my tears. And that's how our uh our artists are feeling right now. And we certainly would like to uh to help not only ourselves and the community, but the artists uh as well. So tha- that's my presentation. I'd be happy to uh answer any any questions at at this point.
Thank you, Mister Mustakis. Questions for Alex? Uh, Mayor Shons?
Yeah, thank you. I don't really have a question, but um I would just say, uh, you know, the the Drayton Theater has has provided a a great venue uh for the arts and um you know, years of entertainment for us besides the, you know, thousands of people that come from outside the region. So we really do uh appreciate um everything you've done. And I know we've taken our kids to the panto at Christmas time and they love it. And so, you know, it's even an opportunity to to get the young kids to start to appreciate theater, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do. And I will um, I will also contact our M P P on that funding piece and uh see if we can uh something fixed on that.
Yes, yeah, we could use the support. Uh, I must say, the the, you know, the the profile, we've we've been doing some um online performances to stay connected with our audience. And uh, this past Sunday, we started a series and it was a a live stream. We were all very nervous because it went live and there were uh over twenty-five hundred people that were watching. But um, it was live from Saint Jacobs to North America because it went through the um uh uh the American Federation of Musicians Facebook um uh channel and that was being broadcast in New York City and they kept hearing about this Saint Jacobs Country Playhouse. So uh, it's it's nice to have that kind of profile for the community as well.
That's awesome.
Mister Reddeman? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, if I if I could.
Okay, Mayor Shons, go ahead.
At the appropriate time, I'm making a motion that we um we support Drayton Theater with their ask of twenty-five thousand dollars from the accommodation tax.
Motion on the floor, anyone second it? Counselor McMillan? And then uh, Mister Reddeman?
Chair Redicop, could I just say when I second that? Um, my wife uh had a Facebook memory come up from March seventh of last year. The last night out that we had was taking my mom to see A Few Good Men at the uh the Saint Jacobs Theater. It was fantastic performance. We usually get to a couple every year and and are never disappointed, so um, so thank you. So I I'll happily second uh the mayor's motion.
All right, sorry for cutting you off.
No, no, I was, I think I was on mute.
Okay, uh, Mister Reddeman, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, just very quickly because you've got a motion on the floor. Um, you know, basically Alex had noted that uh this is a very unique asset. And I think that was very aptly put um because uh we, while we don't have a specific municipal facility, this is what uh the Drayton Entertainment, both the playhouse and the school theater have served uh the community of Woolwich for many, many years. And I I think what also should be noted um is the fact that, you know, when you have a facility like this, there are run-off or spin-off economic development benefits. Uh, you know, certainly hotel stays happen because of Drayton. Certainly restaurants are frequented on opening nights and play nights and things of that nature. So um, you know, certainly the municipal accommodation tax, we never envisioned when it was first set up. Um, you know, that it would be needed for something like this. But I think in these unique times, we have to pivot at times. Uh, and uh, certainly that would be uh, you know, an appropriate use uh of the fund. Uh, certainly for for that purpose. The only other alternative council would have is you have a discussion on tonight as well. Uh, you had also set aside COVID relief funds, uh, you know, a certain small amount uh of funds as well. Uh, but either option uh would be uh appropriate. It was just where council would feel comfortable. Um, but certainly staff's uh uh initial recommendation was the municipal accommodation tax. But then there was also an ask to um uh put the COVID relief discussion on. So uh, just wanted to uh, just wanted to note that. Uh, and to mention that uh uh certainly uh, this is the township's opportunity to support the continued investment in arts and culture. It's been an area within the region that has often been talked about over the last few years about making sure that we're appropriately investing in arts and culture across this region. Uh, and I think in these unique times, uh, staff believe it's a perfect opportunity to support, you know, to make sure uh that post-pandemic uh that uh Drayton is around uh for a long time to come.
Thank you, David. Any other comments before we vote? Seeing none, all those in favor? Uh, that is passed. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mustak- Mustakis, sorry.
That's okay. It's a nice Irish name.
All the best.
Yeah, thank you very much, everybody. Very much appreciated. Have a good night.
Okay, number eight on our unfinished business is uh what David referred to, COVID nineteen relief funding discussion. The last council meeting, council requested this topic. We brought up at a future meeting, the floor is open for discussion on uh COVID relief funding. Richard, did you have a comment first? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mister Chairman. Um, I think probably to start council off and uh I'm not so sure how much uh council has um or where council is is thinking about this. But I but I know from my perspective, there are a couple of things that have been sort of circling around uh on the use of this relief fund and a couple of questions I would probably want to, you know, maybe have council or or sort of ask the question and maybe this could generate some discussion with council. Uh, and it comes along the 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 potential thought about use of these funds. So we have to six thousand and was put into the twenty twenty-one budget. And and I think some of the questions I would have would be, you know, is the council's intention to look at a grant program? So where you're going to be giving money out? Uh, you know, I I know we do, we just did that now with the Saint Jacobs uh playhouse. Um, but you know, looking at it from a grant perspective, you go one step further and say, is it a grant that you be looking at residents only? Or would you be looking at businesses only? Or would you be looking at at something both? And then if you're looking at a grant program, what type of um, you know, considerations would be looking at? It would be something that would be an application base, would be something that that um, you know, people can come to council and 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 ask. And council will decide on that on a case-by-case basis. The other thing that uh council may want to consider is whether the thought or the intentions of fund is to help offset uh expenses um that we may see from COVID or as well as uh lost revenues that we may uh may see as well. Now, mind you, with the recent answering for the province, I think that's become a little bit of a uh of a less so because we were fortunate enough that uh the province will be giving us an additional four hundred and forty-six thousand nine hundred and nine dollars and um in COVID relief funding. So uh, so that was a welcome relief because I know um uh Annie and her team are are still very much struggling with the recreation revenues that uh that they're seeing since we're still, but we were in the stay-at-home and lockdown and now we're still in the the right here in Waddell Region. Um, so as I said, just a couple of things that I just wanted to kind of bring up from a from a a question perspective to maybe help council uh kind of wrestle about what they want to do with this, where they want to go with this. Um, I can tell you also, uh, one of the things we did last year, uh, besides the relief of penalty and interest, we did do a deferral program. Um, we haven't had a discussion in the Waddell Region, the air treasury yet about it. Uh, we have a meeting this Thursday where it is on our agenda to talk about it. Uh, so I'm not so sure if uh if some municipalities are starting to to feel that deep from their from the councils or the residents or businesses. Uh, I know from from our perspective, we just had our first interim due date uh due this past uh Friday. And uh, I think from what I heard, we were about ninety-five percent of what we collected. And we actually uh collected about three hundred thousand dollars more this year than what we did about this time last year. So um, it it is, it is kind of a tale. So I just wanted to kind of offer that out to to maybe uh help uh facilitate some discussions with council.
Uh, Counselor McMillan and then and then Mayor Shons?
Did Mayor Shons want to go first? I I I I had asked for this during the budget process and and the the things that happened that made me ask for this in the budget process was the forgiveness of the penalty and interest on the property tax in twenty twenty. And and I think we did it with a blanket approach at first. And then we moved to an application-based approach and there were some criteria to meet. So my thought was to do the application base um a- and needs-based approach as opposed to the blanket approach. And then the other thing that happened was council voted um to reduce the ice rental at um at at the arenas uh when we got into the red zone that only had ten skaters. Um, and and so we'd lost revenue there. And those were the two things that I was thinking when 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 I talked about this. So I think, I don't know if other counselors have other ideas, but those were the two things that I was saying. If we're going to do this as a council, if we're going to forgive the penalties, if we're going to reduce the ice time rental, then we need to have an idea of where that money is coming from uh and and this could do that. Um, so so those were the two things that I thought. Uh, so I just thought maybe that's where we could start.
Counsel, Mayor Shons?
Yeah, thank you. Um, when I was thinking about it at first, I I had in mind more for property tax. I was thinking, you know, we want to increase taxes and maybe there are some people that are are it it just is not a doable thing for them. Um, but I'm certainly not averse to making it a little bit broader as we, you know, find other you know, other areas that we want to support uh that have been hard hit uh by the pandemic. So I I'm open there, but my original intent was to uh to offset property taxes for people who were uh just having a hard times getting through the pandemic.
Uh, Counselor Merlin, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you through you, uh, Counselor Redicop. Um, I asked to uh bring this uh forward tonight um only because I uh took a phone call uh last week from a a group um in the township. They asked that I not say who they are at this point, but they were inquiring about how and if they would be eligible for um uh any kind of uh subsidy to uh so that they can pay their rent. Uh, they've gone through uh the past uh the past year and kind of canceled canceled out everything that they could pay and they've been, you know, they're five hundred dollars short uh a month on on meeting their rent. Um, and they said that's all it would go for and uh it like, it is a it is a, is a group that we're all familiar with, but and uh, you know, integral part of the community, but um for me, something like that would be uh certainly eligible. And I I just I didn't know what to uh what to tell them because there were different ideas of whether it would be a tax subsidy or or something else. But uh, I think, I don't know, I I would be certainly expand um that kind of uh option to to include things that are community-minded groups uh uh that contribute um to the broader scope of living. So I don't know if that works into people's plan or or not, uh, that would be that specific and who it is.
Counselor Shons?
Yeah, I think that uh falls into what the Counselor McMillan was talking about and having it uh an application-based. And uh, you know, there's nothing wrong with a group coming or an individual or or a company come and uh and ask the question or or apply for it. So I I think it has to be an application-based, uh, not just abroad um throughout the whole re- uh township.
Yeah, I I Counselor, no, go ahead. And then Counselor Martin?
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna say, you know, Mayor Shons talked about property tax and I talked about property tax. But I think we probably need to expand that, given what Mister Prather just talked about with a ninety-five percent payment rate and and actually collecting more money this year than we did last year at this time. We probably need to be a little bit more creative with with uh what this could be used for. So I guess with without getting too specific, I wonder, is this a community group? Um, and and perhaps we could figure out with council, you know, what some stipulations, some some criteria where staff don't have to come to ask us. I know staff had had put on the criteria for the property tax last year that it had to be COVID-related. You couldn't be, you know, three years in arrears and then get the COVID relief. It had to be COVID-related. I think that that would be, you know, if if we did, you know, a a community, not-for-profit, whatever, plus it's COVID-related, we could put some of those criteria in place where staff could then they wouldn't have to come running to us. They could, they could either approve it or or um, you know, send them in a different direction. But may maybe we could do that here as a group.
Counselor Martin, you had a comment?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'd like to know what need is out there in the community that's not covered off by some provincial or federal program. I just heard last week that the federal government um extended some of their programs and I heard the same of one provincial government. So I'd like to know what's out there that is covered by some of those programs.
So we have a comment about property tax. It sounds like everyone wants some kind of application process that would be developed by staff so that we wouldn't have individual cases always coming back to us. And that would be for businesses, individuals and not for profits possibly. Counselor Merlehan, go ahead.
Yeah, through you, just another comment about like the amount, you know, we're only working with $56,000. I mean, one company could come in and snap it all up easily. I'm just wondering if we put a maximum amount on 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 that. And I I don't know what that would be. I mean, this group is looking for if they could get the $500 to carry them through the year. What is this? McMillan, what's the the quick math?
6,000.
That shouldn't be that. Is that we got six months left? Is it that much? There we go. Okay, that's kind of, I don't know if you get too many groups like that, if they're if they're looking for that much. You know, it could, the 56 could go pretty quick. So I don't know how how we do that.
Richard, do you have any comment on on how we might do that?
So through Mr. Chairman, you know, I I think Councilman Hand's comments was was really kind of where I was also leaning as well was whether you were looking at establishing a maximum amount. You know, because I think as has been said and recognized, 56,000 can go by really quickly. You know, a good case in point, if if council decided tonight that they were going to support the Drayton Theater with the 25,000 requests, that would take pretty close to half of what we have have built up in 56. So I think establishing some sort of maximum is a good thing. I think also having an application program is is good. I think the only thing that I would be very mindful about from a from a programming perspective or an application program point of view would be what kind of information would we be looking for from these from these companies? And or from individuals or from not profit groups? And the reason why I bring that up is when we did the deferral program last year, it was very much a very simplistic process. We did it, I think, very uniformly across the the region to say, let's do something that's simple. Let's do something that's, you know, going to be easy for for people to do. But also it wasn't asking for very, I would say, private and sensitive information. I think when you're dealing with not for profits is a little bit different because a lot of them have charitable statuses. And so with that, they they do have their financials posted to the CRA. You just have to know how to find it. But you can get it publicly. But depending on what else we're looking at, whether it's a resident or whether, you know, if we open it up to to any business. And if we start asking for some of this information, you know, it can get quite quite private and quite sensitive. And I'm not so sure, you know, we as the township would be quite set up to, yeah, because once it's in our control, we would need to to keep that secure. And and I don't know how our clerk common would would feel about that because ultimately that would kind of fall within her her realm of of keeping information confidential and secure. But it is consideration to do. And if we look at it, any kind of an application basis, we could look at it from a very high level, like, you know, simplistic. Have you been affected by COVID? What have you been affected by COVID? Doing that, you know, getting them to to testify that that yes, I've been affected. No, I haven't received funding from upper levels of government. Or if I did, what kind of, you know, what kind of funding did I receive? Putting those types of parameters in can maybe can maybe help. And and I think to Councilman Land's perspective as well as and the thought of putting a cap on a grant program is is a is a good idea as well.
Mr. Brennaman, go ahead.
Just one other thing for council's consideration is if you're looking to consider, you know, support for any residents within the broader community. It may be wise as well for us to work with well, which community services who set up the residence support fund so that we're not working at cross purposes, but we're working in collaboration to perhaps even leverage resources. And to Richard's point, they also have the expertise and the experience and may be able to be helpful to township staff in terms of making appropriate assessments because it's my understanding, you know, they have to make those types of decisions in terms of what level of support to provide residents, families, et cetera. So I just wanted to add that into the mix is that we have to remember there's local community support groups out there that we should consider perhaps working with if that's the direction the council wants to go to support residents, businesses, not for profits, especially on the residential side. And I raised that just because it's a it's a regular topic, a conversation as well on the group that I chair made up of the four townships and all of the community support agencies. How do we continue to support our most vulnerable during the pandemic and post pandemic?
Thank you, David. Counselor Shons and then Mayor Shons.
Yeah, and and I guess one thing that I would like to comment on, I think it has to be a helping hand and not a bailout. I don't think we want to, and I don't know what this group is that Councilman Merlehan is talking about, but I don't think we want to pay their rent. I don't mind helping somebody out, but I don't think we want to bail them out. I think that's a, there's a difference there.
Great, thank you. Mayor Shons.
Thank you. What would it look like to say any personal applications have to be made by the the community fund? So that if someone wants a personal, make a personal application, it would actually be the community fund that is making the application to us on their behalf. Is that too complicated?
Richard, go ahead.
I I I think I think from my perspective, you know, and and thank you, David, for for kind of bringing that that up. And I and I think that is probably a good way to go is to partner with our community groups because they already have the system set up. And I and I and I think since they have that system set up, I don't think it would be too onerous on township staff to partner with them on that. I mean, I think it was something we would need to explore with them to make sure that it truly isn't owners. Not just orders on our staff, but also owners on them as well. But I but I think, you know, having those discussions with them is is very key. And, you know, and and I think even some of the things that I'm thinking about right now is, you know, if council wants to do that from a residential perspective, it doesn't necessarily mean that while we have to 56,000, it doesn't mean it all has to go one way or all has to go the other. You can still spread it around if council so chooses to do that.
Thank you, Richard. Counselor Martin, you had a comment?
And my comment would be when it comes to property tax, I probably wouldn't support that. Because I think the trigger said first of all, was you, we could go in 95% if people paid their taxes. So to me, taxes is not an issue. I think there's there's other ways we can help people.
Great, thank you for that comment. Counselor McMillan, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, through you. I I would like to see this be limited to individuals or community groups or not for profits, just because if a business comes in and and happens upon this opportunity and ends up getting some tax relief or some rent relief. And then three months later, another business comes in and we're out of money or, you know, we've stopped doing this. And 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 they say, well, you helped this business and now you're not helping us. Like, if we're gonna if you're gonna help a business, then it has to be kind of fair. And and then I think we're we're getting into some deep waters that as a council, we don't have the resources to help those people. I think we do have the resources to help with some property tax forgiveness. We do have the resources to help with some community groups. I don't think we as a second tier municipality have the resources to help businesses in a way that's fair. I think we, you know, you could arbitrarily draw a line on, you know, on a certain size business. But I don't know where we draw that line. And 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 I think that's getting us into really deep waters. So I would, I would be in favor of helping individuals with property tax. I understand Counselor Martin's point that it isn't a problem yet. I don't know that it won't be. It doesn't appear that it's going to be, but I I don't know why I'd want to close that door right away. And then community groups and not for profits. You know, if we want to figure out a way to help them, I I think I'd I'd like to see it limited to that.
Thank you. So we had a we had this put in our budget. I'm not sure how many people realize it in the community that we have this COVID 56,000 and have any requests been made to access any of this funding yet that we know of? And Counselor Merlehan said there is a community group that approached him specifically, not not naming this fund, but asking for some assistance. So I just wondered that. Okay, Counselor Merlehan, you had your handle?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Redicop. Through you, I guess, general comments. I I like the idea that Mr. Brennaman brought up about partnering with the community group. And even if even if we did some sort of, you know, if we did like 30% or something of whatever they are giving as a way of reaching more people and helping with with their 75,000 that they have. I don't know how much that's grown since. But if if we kind of matched so many dollars per whatever for the the residential side. And then I like Counselor McMillan's idea with maybe tax deferral on businesses and make that support come through that as an interest free deferral on the taxes. I don't know how the 56, if that would take into account, like we take the interest out of there or just just lose on that proposition. But that might be a way of just dealing with the businesses as an application basis that was done previously with the businesses and and kept on with that. The and and to answer Counselor Shons about whether it was a bailout for the group. No, their rent is much more than that. And this is, that's just what the shortfall is that they can't find anywhere else. And, you know, eventually I'll tell you who it is. They just asked me not to. So you 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 will support them. I'm 100% certain.
Counselor Martin, and then Mr. Brennaman, let Mr. Brennaman go first. Okay, David, go ahead.
So I think I think in reflection on on the good discussion that council has had tonight, what was important is that you have enough direction at the end of the evening to provide to staff so that we could go away, work with a group like well, which community services and even community care concepts and others. You know, because they're used to doing this. And certainly come back with an application based system. The only other thing I would say is based on my recent experience watching things unfold with another type of grant support that the municipality chose to get involved in our community along with the regional tourism organization and the Fed Dev funding that was or the federal funding that was received. I watched interesting developments happen there in terms of once they received all the applications, instead of saying that there was a an upset limit or whatever, they first judged the volume of applications that are received. And then made an assessment as to how much could be doled out perhaps to everyone that was eligible instead of having haves and have nots. I only note that as another approach, instead of council saying tonight that we'd like to give direction to staff, that there is a cap that we actually first evaluate under an application based system, what comes in? And then be able to make an assessment of following that just as an alternative option to consider.
Counselor Martin and then Counselor McMillan.
Okay, when I hear comments that we should defer taxes for businesses, I say to myself, we haven't earned anything from last year. When we did that last year, which I didn't support, if you remember, I said this number of things everybody has to pay every month. And if we're going to defer taxes, of course, we're not going to pay that until the deadline. And so big businesses that could afford to pay taxes, they hung on to their money. So what happened? We lost a lot of interest money and those companies could could pay their taxes all along. So I don't want to get into that again. I mean, there was somebody that was really, really in trouble, that might be a different story, but I don't I don't want to defer taxes because it didn't work last year and it just cost a lot of money.
Counselor McMillan?
Yeah, just regarding Mr. Brennaman's comments. I I kind of like that idea. I just don't know if we're going to get all of the applications all at once. Like, I I wasn't under, I didn't think that we were going to like put out an advertisement for applications. We weren't going to pull out a call for applications. I was thinking more just having this reserve here in case, you know, somebody comes in and says, I I can't pay my property tax this month. They could be pointed towards this. But I I just don't know, like, we've only got one one group that's expressed interest so far. Well, two, actually, because Drayton, Drayton Theater Company and and then this anonymous group. But I would, I would kind of just like to have this here in case people come up rather than putting out a call and trying to figure out, you know, yes, we absolutely have to spend it because like if we keep getting, if we keep getting the property tax paid at 95%, then then maybe we don't need to spend all of the 56,000. Like, there's nothing keeping us from putting that 56,000, you know, towards the levy for next year and and not using it for for COVID relief.
Mr. Brennaman, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor McMillan's point, I I certainly understand, Counselor, where you're going with that. However, I would say at the same point, right now, in the absence of any coverage it got as part of the broader budget approval, we were going to, I would think, have to do some form of promotion that there's that there is this fund that was approved or or set up. Or otherwise, the community isn't going to know about it, you know. They, I take it they would have known about it, you know, as I said, through budget coverage and that process. But my only concern is is that, well, I understand what you're saying is if we don't do some sort of formal promotion of an application based system, would there not still at least need to be some, you know, once we receive some level of direction from council, some level of promotion out to the community to make sure people all know that there is funding available. And, you know, just generally speaking, these are the broad parameters or that sort of thing. That's 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 my only concern is that in the absence of any form of promotion, how will the community know to come forward? That's my only concern.
That's a good point. Mr. Prether, go ahead.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mr. Chairman, just just a couple of comments on the tax deferral. Just just, you know, so councilize some some context and and some recalled memory. When we did that last year, so we did the deferral for the final tax bill and we did the deferral for 60 days. I believe we had about 18 applications is what we had for that program. And it was a pretty good mix between residential and and businesses. So it wasn't all one sector and it wasn't all the other. And as I said, it was, it was about 18. And and some of the I would say the deferrals from the business side were the ones I suspected probably would be because I knew they were, they were suffering. But I think from a deferral program, one of the things I probably would would mention though is whatever we do on that, I think at least from the school board tax perspective, I think we'd be on our own. If you recall, the province actually deferred the payments that we needed to make to them by 60 days. I don't suspect that's, I could be wrong. We will see what happens, but I suspect that probably won't happen again this year. And whatever deferral we do, we we will essentially be on our own. I'm 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 assuming we could probably work the region from that perspective if if we needed to, but I think the school board, we would uh we would still be on the the schedule as normal.
Counsel Merlehan, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, uh through you, would there be an opportunity to, I I don't know how hard this is and if it's unreasonable, for sure, tell me. But like if we have everybody who's up to date on their property tax, and then they and then they miss, can an email be sent to them saying, you know, is this COVID-related? Uh you know, if we if we did that and didn't outreach that way and then worked with Woolwich Community Services through them, could that allow us to reach people that we need to reach without necessarily, you know, putting out a big call for applications?
It's, uh I think potentially, uh that could be a lot of work, too. Um you know, and and I think I think some of it gets back to the contact information we have. We don't necessarily have easy contact information, other than maybe just a an address. You know, we sometimes don't even have a phone number, uh so that may be maybe a challenge, and we may not know. And and sometimes when people miss a miss a payment, it it's for, it could be for several reasons. We've we've had people that just plum forgot, and and all of a sudden they get a reminder of us and go, oh, yeah, I forgot about that. But if we said, hey, was this COVID-related, they could go, yep. So, yeah, I I I I I think I would just be be mindful about uh whatever we do if we go down that road.
Might be some pri- privacy concerns as well. Mayor Jeanse, go ahead.
Yeah, um through you to to David, David, do you know how much uptake there's been on the community fund?
Through you, Chair, to uh the mayor, um no, I don't, however, um I was going to put my hand up next and say that uh we have a rural recovery meeting tomorrow uh as scheduled. Uh was going to use the opportunity uh to take uh um perhaps Kelly Christie and and Kathy Harrington offline, uh you know, following the meeting, uh to have a discussion uh to see where things are at. Um and I was also going to offer up to council you know, an an attempt if we could summarize where we feel council is right now. And maybe you allow us with this direction that you've, you know, it's good you had a discussion tonight. Uh if you feel comfortable uh that you've provided us with appropriate uh direction, and if Richard feels the same, um then, you know, both he and I could have a discussion with Kelly and Kathy um and and perhaps come back to council i- as quickly as possible um with what this might tangibly look like going forward. You know, you certainly have from a high level tried to provide us with, generally speaking, where you would like to provide support. Um you know, and to that end, that's one of the options to move this forward this evening, is to summarize where council's at and have staff go away and have the discussions with our community service, support agency partners, and come back uh with a tangible type of recommendation on how to move forward.
Mayor Jeanse, go ahead.
I'm just sort of blue-skying here, but um you know, would another option be to take part of it and make a donation to the community fund, um and just let them administer it? That doesn't, that doesn't allow us to uh say, you know, we wanna use it for a not-for-profit or for some other um some other group, so so it's probably not the way we want to go, but just thinking out loud.
So it's a direction from council, like uh we continue to think about ways uh that we want to help the community members who are in distress, uh either through this community fund, but David off has offered to speak to our two partners in the community, Woolwich Community Services and Community Care Concepts, to get their ideas about maybe who's in distress and how they've reacted, and then uh we can then go forward with uh our own uh ideas about how we want to administer this fund, either through uh these two agencies or through our staff in some way. Counsel Merlehan, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm happy to have our staff um put their heads together with with the other groups to figure out the best paths forward and to come back to uh council, but I was wondering if we could maybe approve a thousand dollars for this community group that needs the rent, so that they're not waiting, you know, if it takes us another couple of meetings um to get this done, you know, they're not, they're not, you know, hanging in the wind, waiting for us to figure it out. If we, as a council, approve two months for this group, that's a thousand dollars. Uh and then, you know, we've got fifty-five thousand dollars left that we can uh continue to move forward with.
We need a motion? Yeah, okay, um so you make a motion, uh Counsel Merlehan?
I'm just throwing it out there for, I'm putting the beach ball out for the other counselors to bounce around if they want to.
Counseler Merlehan?
Uh yeah, through you, uh Counsel Redicop. That, you know, it's an it's a nice offer and a and a gesture, I I'm wondering if we can, we can wait. They're not gonna go like out of business next week or anything. Um but uh the long term in the next uh bunch of months is uh is is certainly um been difficult, uh but I think it's hard to make a motion to give a group money when you don't even know who the group is, so I I would just be uncomfortable with with voting on that myself. And I and I wouldn't expect anybody else to wanna do that either. So I mean, I I'm happy to talk to you people offline and uh but they just, they they asked me not to, and uh uh so I mean, at that point, it tells me that, you know, they've got enough to get through the next month or so anyway, so. Um but we can, we can go for there, I I appreciate the the offer.
Great, so David and uh Richard, do you have uh enough direction from council, or do we need to clarify a little bit more for you?
Why, why don't we, why don't we a- attempt to summarize? Uh it seems that there's generally speaking broad consensus that um you you do agree that it makes sense uh direct direct staff to meet with our community support agencies, i.e. Woolwich Community Services and Community Care Concepts, that we're to gather information from them as to any information that they can provide with respect to community need uh and also any data with respect that uh they generally speaking can provide in the way of what's been provided in the way of community support. And that that information will help us make an assessment as to um how we could move forward with some sort of either application-based system or some sort of cooperation and collaboration with them to support our residents um and uh some of the not-for-profit type organizations. Uh the only clarity uh I think we would need is around business. Um you know, certainly the focus with the community support agencies will be around residents and the most, you know, vulnerable and and most in need. Um but the only clarity, I think, um that we would need this evening is around, you know, where did council really land with respect to business? You know, is that something that you want us to explore as well as part of the equation? Or right now is to focus in on more of the um residential uh or residents and community need and support?
Uh Mayor Jeanse, go ahead.
I would say focus on the residents, the community need and support. I think um other levels of government have provided a lot of support for businesses, and uh so so I would focus on those other groups.
I I heard uh Counsel McMillan say that, too. So is that direction for for our staff going forward? Okay, yeah, thank you. Thank you, party, and good discussion of this difficult time of the pandemic, I really appreciate it. So number nine on our agenda is uh some consent items. We have several items to receive for information, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Would there even be, would there be someone willing to move these consent items? Moved by uh Counsel Merlehan, seconded by Counselor Martin, all those in favor? Thank you. Staff reports and memos, number ten, there's none. Out of business, number eleven, the endorsement of the region of Waterloo resolutions passed during budget twenty twenty-one discussions and City of Waterloo resolution regarding affordable housing and inclusionary zone. At our last council meeting, council requested this topic, we brought up at a future meeting, the floor is open for some discussion on the on the uh endorsement that we had talked about last time. Counsel McMillan?
Thank you, Chair, through you. Um we had some correspondence from the City of Waterloo that passed uh a motion regarding uh a request to the region around uh reallocating police funds. And and when that correspondence came to us, I asked if we could have an agenda item um on our agenda for for a similar um type request. And and the reason why I asked for that to be an agenda item and not simply endorsing the City of Waterloo's request was because I I didn't think that the City of Waterloo's request captured the needs of Woolwich residents, and and I thought we needed something that was a little bit better worded to represent our constituents and and our municipality. Um and and so when these motions came up um from the region that the region had passed regarding the uh provision provincial advocacy, um the police reform and arbitration and the upstream initiatives, I thought these perfectly represented um what we, what I wanted to advocate on behalf of our constituents to the region. Um so I think this came in uh the mayor's report, the regional report uh last meeting, and it was at about ten fifty-eight. So rather than rushing through that, we we put it on tonight's agenda. So I I don't think there's a whole lot that that I was hoping to add to this, I just wanted to say uh I believe that the region is on the right track with investing in upstream money a- and requesting a reform to the budgeting process for police um for police services. Uh because I think that it's broken right now, it's costing us a lot of money, and we're spending a lot of money where it's maybe not in the right spot. Um so I I just wanted to say that I think the region did a really good thing here, uh and I agree with their requests, and and I think that they're representing our constituents, the constituents here Woolwich really well with these requests.
Mayor Jeanse, did you have a comment from the region's perspective?
Um I could, you threw me off when you said the region's perspective.
Oh, sorry, sorry, or from your own perspective, you don't have to speak for the region, that's true, sorry.
I I mean, I I can speak from the region's perspective, too, uh and because I because I do believe um it's upstream initiatives that we need to do to um resolve some of the issues that are are circulating around policing. I think our our police services has done a really good job of um of of sort of being ahead of a- ahead of uh the crowd in the in a number of ways. Um still has a ways to go, as any organization does. But uh the last two, the upstream initiatives and the way the wording is on the uh provincial advocacy re- police reform and arbitration are are really the way to um sort of get at some of the root causes of um even the even the social biases. Um there there's just a a whole lot of things all wrapped up in all of uh all four of these, four, five, all five of these um initiatives that that the region is focusing on. So we we do have a at the region, a a really strong focus on housing first and um and the upstream initiatives, uh which I guess the automated speed enforcement is sort of the outlier on here. But but the rest sort of fit in that category.
Thank you. Do we need a motion? All right, go go ahead, Counsel McMillan.
Sure, Redicop, if you don't mind, I I I apologize, I'm putting some people on the spot here, but um could Mr. Patrick possibly tell us, just so that I can explain why I think this is an issue for us, when it's a regional issue? What percentage of our property tax dollars goes to the region, and does Mayor Jeanse know off the top of her head the regional budget, how much of that is in in police services? And if you don't know, I apologize for putting you on the spot like this.
I'd be able to answer both those questions better than I can.
So through you, Mr. Chairman, at least I can probably answer the first one. Um and and to clarify, we collect property taxes on behalf of the region and the school boards. Um just wanna make sure I I clarify that, and I believe the percentage, at least from the residential side, I think is about fifty-six to fifty-eight percent, I think, is the is the is the region. So out of your tax bill on the residential side, somewhere around that line is a is the regional portion of it. From this, from the police board, I don't quite have that information in front of me.
It's it's a hundred and eighty-nine point two million for the police service budget. And I think the region is just over a billion. So we're looking like ten percent in the neighborhood of twelve, thirteen percent, so like a significant portion, that was the point I was trying to make.
It is significant, yes.
Yeah, it is, yeah. Well, uh do we need a uh a motion for this? Or just uh that we endorse it in the region of Waterloo resolutions passed during the budget twenty-one discussion? Counsel McMillan, go ahead.
Do does Mayor Jeanse think that it would carry any more weight beyond the conversation that we've had here, saying that this is the right thing to do if the council of Woolwich supports these five motions from from the region?
How much more weight it can carry, but I think it's the biggest statement.
I I'd be prepared to put that motion on the floor, then, that Woolwich council endorses these five motions that uh that the region put forward.
Moved by uh Counsel McMillan, I have a second there. Counsel Jeanse, all those in favor? Thank you, it's passed, very. Uh number twelve on our agenda, outstanding activity list adds a Friday, March fifth, twenty twenty-one. Any discussion on the uh outstanding activity list? So none, we'll go to number thirteen, correspondence. Council wished to take any action on any of the items of the correspondence, and I think there's six items. Uh Counsel Martin?
Yes, I would think that thirteen point three and thirteen point five should uh support them.
Those are which ones?
Restaurants, stage two, and the other one is color code capacity limits.
Oh, okay.
They're almost the same type thing.
The one from Towne, the the Lake of Base?
Yeah.
And it's already a city council resolution. Any comments? Counsel Merlehan?
It 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 makes sense um with the uh the what they have there with uh capacity rates and restaurants and the size of restaurants. I'm just uh not in a position uh to not go against science and and uh the medical health uh officers and and hope that, you know, any kind of decision-making is is being done based on science rather than uh perception. I, you know, I'm no doctor or epidemiologist or anything to know that, and and you know, there's lots of different examples that you can look at, people always point to Costco and 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 uh, you know, Walmarts and such, uh but when you get into restaurants and you start drinking and uh eating there, and you're there for long periods of time, it is different uh than than those places, so. Um I I'm, I don't feel comfortable uh passing that on up and and hope that uh uh our medical professions, and I I feel confident in in what the decisions that they've made so far, so I'm not gonna support that motion.
Anyone else wanna comment on the two ones that uh Counsel Martin raised, Counsel McMillan? Anyone else want to comment on the two ones that uh Counselor Martin raised? Counselor McMillan?
Mayor Shans, didn't the region make a request to the province to reevaluate the? The restrictions with the businesses? I thought I read that on Twitter. I thought Michael Harris had, had sent out that he was. Um happy that that had passed. I don't know if you recall off the top of your head. I'm giving you a pop quiz here tonight.
I turned into a pumpkin half an hour ago. I, I don't, I don't recall. I'm sorry.
The other comments? Counselor Shans, go ahead.
Yeah, I think part of the problem is uh with having a blanket of, of a number of people. There's, there's restaurants that are huge and there's restaurants that are really small and they fall into the same category. And I take something, you know, uh like some of the mom and pop restaurants are quite a bit smaller than some of the, some of the larger ones and uh. But yet they get to have just as many people in, inside. Uh so I, I, I agree. I think it should be on square footage or, or the. The ability to, to distance in those, in those places. And uh, you know, and then it can be pleased uh through that. So I, I have no problem uh uh supporting these.
To people who. Want to support the, the, the two townships that talk about restaurants and capacity, capacity limits with. Counselor McMillan?
Yeah, I, I didn't read the letters through completely. Is it just asking them to reevaluate it? Or are they asking for like specific changes?
Um, the one from the Lake of Bayes, the provincial government review and reconsidered the capacity limits for restaurants. And they, and they talk about. And the further that this motion be forwarded to the premier of the board and the simple Muskoka district healthy. So I, I don't think they're mandating what the province should do or what public health should do. They just want to reconsider it. Yes.
Yeah, I, I would support that. If we, my apologies to Mayor Shans. It was uh. On, on uh last month, the start of last month, that, that the region made a similar request to the, the province. Um just to reevaluate capacity limits so that they could be more equitable um as opposed to blanket. Capacity limits. So I would support these two letters just to have a reevaluation. Uh that is more equitable for, for smaller places or bigger places, whatever.
Counselor Martin, you moved that? And Counselor Shans, you seconded it? Uh, all those in favor, uh these two that's gonna pass? Thank you very much. Okay, fourteen, uh public notice, none. Number fifteen, notice of closed meeting, none, notice of motion, none. Adfirmment, the meeting adjournance moved by. Counselor McMillan, seconded by Counselor Martin, all those in favor? When the sign-off comes, uh comes, then we, we have a special meeting after. Or, or you're gonna chair it now?
This is the, yeah, this is.
Okay, go ahead. Sorry.
Okay. Any disclosures of peculiary interest? None. A motion that council convenes into committee of all, just hang on a second while I make you all bigger. Counselor McMillan and Counselor Redicup, all those in favor? Carrie, motion that the following bylaws be introduced and read a first and second time and. That is a bylaw to amend Schedule F. Being a bylaw to provide for the appointment of chief building of, uh chief building official and building inspectors for the township of Woolwich. And then a bylaw to confirm all those actions and proceedings of the council. By law, we just did Counselor Shans and. Counselor McMillan, all those in favor? Thank you. Motion, committee, committee of the whole rise and report to council. By Counselor Martin and Sean, so all of the favor. Carry. Motion, the following bylaws at the end of the quote, we read a third time and finally passed and could be numbered as bylaws. Number nineteen dash twenty twenty-one to twenty dash twenty twenty-one. And then they decide by the mayor and quick and seal with a corporate seal. Bye. Counselor Shans and Redicup, all those in favor? Thank you. I'm having trouble with my tongue. Motion that the meeting be during to meeting on a regular session on Tuesday, March twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. Counselor Shans and McMillan, all those in favor? That is Carrie. In closing, council would like to thank all who participated in the meeting to make. Tune in to our YouTube livestream and join us again on March twenty-third. On our YouTube livestream again for our next council meeting. Council, uh just stay on until uh we know that the uh YouTube is turned off, please. Good night, everyone.